Good evening and welcome to the April 27, 2023 Board of County Commissioners, a comprehensive plan amendment public hearing. Before I get started, I know we have five commissioners here. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda is on her way. She had a canvassing board meeting and should be here within a few minutes. So we will have six board members. But the Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal of an amendment to the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for State Review. For the amendment being considered for transmittal this evening, a second public hearing will be held for the consideration of adoption of the amendment following state review. The Board will also consider the adoption of two proposed amendments to the future land use map. I'll now request that the Planning Commission staff introduce the first item on tonight's agenda. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Melissa Linehart for the record, Planning Commission staff. The first item we have tonight is item A1. That's HCCPA 2302. This is a comprehensive plan text amendment that's publicly initiated and it's an update of the local functional classification map. With that, I'll introduce Ms. Katrina Corcoran. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. HTV, can you please pull up the presentation? And can you go to the first slide, please? Thank you. Good evening, Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment 2302. As was mentioned, this is the local functional classification map. Next slide, please. Some background on this amendment. The Mobility Section map series includes Map 7, the local functional classification map. It's currently unadopted. In coordination with various stakeholders, this map was updated by Hillsborough County's Community and Infrastructure Planning Department. Some background on functional classification, excuse me, it is used as a key factor for highway design, pavement design, and land development regulation. It includes classifications of road types, including principal arterials. Those are interstates with high volumes and limited access, arterials, which are high-capacity roads but below principle, collectors, which are low-to-moderate capacity roads and move traffic from locals to arterials, and locals, which are low-capacity roads with the highest access to adjacent properties. Next slide, please. This text amendment will adopt the local functional classification map due to the recent update and the regulatory use of the map. The map reflects the county's growth in the last decade, including new coordinors and widenings. The amendment proposes to rename it to Map 4 to be grouped with the other Mobility Section maps, adopted maps. That's Maps 1 through 3. It's currently listed as Map 7. There is also one minor clarifying update for another adopted map, as noted in your packets. This amendment would also remove 2021 from Mobility Section Map 3, the title, on context classification. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission did receive comments from the following agencies that are listed on the slide in front of you. Most of these comments were to provide no comments or objections, with the exception of Plant City. We worked with Plant City to, they requested to remove roads recently switched over from the county to city ownership. So staff reviewed and removed those roads that were on the local functional classification map. That includes Charlie Taylor Road, Cornette Road, and East Alsobrook Street, the limits of which are noted in your packet. And finally, Hillsborough County also had no objections from the department, and I'd like to note that the Affordable Housing Department noted in particular that they supported the map's adoption. Next slide, please. This slide shows the applicable comprehensive plan policies. You see several future land use element policies listed here. These provide references to functional classification and either restrict or direct certain land uses based on the roadway type. You'll also see the Mobility Section policies listed here. Those include standards for subdivisions, access management, and grid connectivity, which would be more in line with the code language there as well. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission recommends that HCCPA 2302 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and transmitted to DEO for state and regional review. Next slide. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. John Patrick from Community Infrastructure Planning has also joined us here tonight, as well as the consultant that worked on this project for community infrastructure planning, I believe, has joined us virtually. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Any board comments? Or if not, can we have a motion to transmit at the state review?
Second.
Can we get a motion to transmit for state review? Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Owen, no other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried 5 to 0.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item B1. Joanne or Adam, do you want to state our policy? I know we have less than six members right now, and I know Commissioner Cameron Sepeda is on her way. I just text her to see how long until she gets here, but...
So at this time, with five members seated, the Board's policy is that applicants may request a continuance as a right to a future date, future public hearing, in order to allow for additional board member.
All right, the applicant for B1. Mr. Pressman, what's your pleasure?
We would really much, very much like to move forward with six members if we could wait for Commissioner Sepeda, but with just five members, we can't proceed.
Okay. How about the applicant for B2?
So moving forward, it would be, we would ask for 30 days if we're going to move forward on the continuance.
Mr. Chairman, Michael Brooks for the applicant on the record. Same answer as Mr. Pressman. We would move forward with six members, but not five.
Okay. Well, at this time, we're going to take a very brief recess to see if Commissioner Cameron Sepeda arrives, but a lot of things are going on this evening, so I don't have a tolerance for the extended amount of time being here. But we'll take a brief recess and see if Commissioner Cameron Sepeda arrives here, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Point of order? Like, how do you? Just...
10, 15 minutes?
Okay.
I think she's, I think it's imminent, but...
Right, right, right. I just kind of wanted to...
Okay. All right, thanks. We're in recess. Welcome back to the County Commission Comprehensive Plan Public Hearing. Would staff like to introduce B1?
Yes, the next item we have is item B1, HCCPA 23-01, and I will turn this over to Ms. Carla Yanos, who will be doing the presentation. Thank you.
HTV, may you please pull up staff's presentation? Thank you. Good evening. This is HCCPA 23-01, also known as 6302 North Falkenburg Road. Next slide, please. The subject property is a privately initiated small-scale future land use map amendment on 18.49 acres. It is going currently from residential 1 future land use category to light industrial plan. Next slide, please. The general location, it's located the northmost plan amendment of the January 2023 cycle. It is located west of Falkenburg Road, north of Sly Avenue, south of Twin Star Place in the Eureka Springs community. It is also located in the rural area and the East Lake Orient Park community plan. Next slide, please. The area is predominantly single-family agricultural uses, as you see on your screen. North is single-family. Further north is the Motor Enclave, which was approved in 2020. To the east and west, you have agricultural uses, and further to the west is the Tampa Executive Airport. South is a public utility, followed by a single-family and church. The area, again, is mostly of rural character. Next slide, please. The adopted future land use for the property is residential 1. It is completely surrounded by this property, this category, and you have public, quasi-public, extending further northwest and west, and it contains the Tampa Executive Airport. You have a little bit of natural preservation further to the southwest, and then the suburban mixed-use 6 and the community mixed-use 12. You'll find along the south and southwest along I-4 corridor, and due to its location, it's within the urban service area in that area, so that's why you see those categories of higher intensity. Now, RES 1 typically allows farms, ranches, residential uses, rural scale, neighborhood commercial uses, offices, and multipurpose projects. Commercial office and multipurpose projects are subject to locational criteria. Next slide, please. The proposed future land use is light industrial plan. This typically allows processing, manufacturing, recycling, and storage of materials. It does allow for some support offices and warehousing, but in the LIP, which is Light Industrial Plan Future Land Use category, it's, you know, the only other category is within proximity, which is located to the north where the Motor Enclave currently sits. Now, the density here along for the light industrial plan does increase. Next slide, please. So as you can see on the screen, you have an increase in non-residential intensity. So it's going to 0.75 FAR, so that produces approximately 604,000 square feet of non-residential use. It eliminates the residential density compared to what the existing one provides. It also introduces the typical uses for like manufacturing, something that wasn't introduced previously with the adopted future land use category. Next slide, please. Now, Planning Commission staff has reviewed the request for consistency with the comprehensive plan. So on the screen, you will see some of the policies that were identified during the review. Overall, the plan amendment introduces uses that are not compatible with the rural area. The introduction of light industrial uses is in conflict with the protection of residential neighborhoods and within the community plan that desires to maintain a rural lifestyle. Also, in this location, the livable communities element has very strong language within the East Lake Orient Park community plan, which envisions this specific area of Eureka Springs as to maintain agricultural and rural lifestyle. Specifically, it is designated on the concept map. It identifies it with residential 1 future land use category. Next slide, please. At this time, Planning Commission recommends that the HCCPA 23-01 be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and they are recommending forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide. And this concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Applicant, each representative will have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, before I begin, I do have one other member of the applicant team. Would we each be allowed three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Is the PowerPoint up for you, sir? There we go. Good evening, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 400 in St. Petersburg. Three pivotal factors have not been considered. This is the most important map for you to look at. This map is from the Planning Commission report, and it shows you that light industrial exists throughout this entire area. The site that we're proposing is in the middle, at the apex of I-75 and I-4, and the airport being the big intensive user in the area. So LI is extreme throughout and the predominant use in the area. But the Planning Commission staff, as you heard from Carla, who does a great job, is a rural area, residential agriculture predominant uses, which is absolutely not the case. Planning Commission gets it right. A lot of the times, we feel that they're off the mark here. They also didn't tell you that we have a companion PD, which you will have complete and utter control over, which only your six-to-one use, open storage of trucks, vehicles, equipment, and construction equipment. We also added a 35-foot buffer, eight-foot-high solid fence, and a, under the zoning, a PD plant is required. So open storage has low trips, low infrastructure, well-screened and buffered, and it's quiet. Staff report tells you that a PD is required, and again, you'll have total control. In fact, at the Planning Commission hearing, Melissa Zornita, the chief, specifically directed the Planning Commission that they could not consider the zoning application, which is absolutely critical to this request. As Carla also mentioned, they evaluated this, that 604,000 of processing, manufacturing, recycling uses, which is absolutely not the case, are restricting it under the PD. The other exclusion is, and just barely whispered, talked about, is an approval for the Motor Enclave, which is just a stone's throw from this location. In fact, we had to notice them. 191 acres, 1.5-mile auto track, and this was approved by the zoning staff, by the Planning Commission Board, zoning hearing master. So with all this, Commissioners, not only has the cow left the barn, the whole herd has left the barn in terms of this area, what it is and what you have approved in terms of, just let alone immediately to the north, let alone the immediate area. Even when you pull back further, you have the airport, you have CMU 12s, and of course, the intersection interstate of I-4 and I-75. Airport is predominant feature, and we are the border of the airport influence zone. In regard to the Motor Enclave, that will be, in my opinion, 1,000, if not 10,000, times more impacting for trips, noise with 320 garages for race cars in terms of impacts of this area. We did have a very good community meeting. We had a lot of people show up who are all budding owners. They did not appear at the Planning Commission, except for one gentleman who's here. He owns a racetrack to the north, and there's no letters or emails into the file, so we're very glad to work with neighbors. Transportation improvements are extensive, as required for the Motor Enclave.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, sir.
Commissioners, Patrick Sullivan, 6150 8th Avenue South, Gulfport, Florida. To pick up where Mr. Preston left off, the site has a historic use. Since 1984, it was an agricultural operator, large commercial nursery called the Greener Path. It operated as a commercial nursery since 1984, producing plants and trees that were trucked in and out of the site, predominantly through southwest Florida. In summary, pivotal items not considered is the companion PD, which is the 191-acre approved LI that is to the north of us, and the transportation improvements, the review is maximum impacts. We obviously are not the maximum impact. We're a low-impact PD. The LI is prominent in the area. The area has already changed, and that's unfortunate for the area. It's going to be good for the county, and it will be good for the area overall. The use is very low-impact. There's no infrastructure being proposed, very low trips, very low activity, and obviously there was a historical impacting use. That's it for our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Brad Olshansky, 5120 Marina Way in Tampa. I'm the owner of the Motor Enclave, and when we went for our approval, which we received unanimous approval to go to light industrial, light industrial characterization was at the request of the county because they didn't want our garage condos to be residential. So very specific use, and all of our actual uses on our site were part of our PD. We're investing $150 million in our project, going to generate significant property taxes and economic benefit to the county. This project is, you know, akin to saying, let's put a storage yard next to Water Street. I'm not opposed to other characterizations of a change of zoning, but when it's, you know, comes to, we're investing this kind of money, and then down the street, they want to put a storage yard for industrial equipment, in addition to the fact that we're spending $5 million on off-site improvements, brand-new roads, utilities, et cetera. So to have this type of equipment and semi-trucks and storage of heavy equipment sitting outside, even with a fence, is detrimental to the success of our project, we believe. So we would say that this, even with the specific use, not having 600,000 square feet, but having storage, we don't think it's compatible with our use, and we would say that a light industrial characterization should be contiguous with us if someone goes for that in the future. This is a kind of donut hole property down the street. Last thing I'll say is the LI characterization on the map is not correct, completely correct, even though we're a huge chunk of it. The whole parcel across the street from their property is a tree preservation area. Maybe it's called light industrial, but it's never going to be developed because it's a tree mitigation bank. So half that neighborhood is protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Advocate has a three-minute rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Olshansky. Although he's speaking here, he's a good neighbor, and he's a good man. We have respect for him. The fact is, the first map I showed you, the area is predominantly LIP. That's the reality of it. Storage is a great use here. We're going to be within, or let me say this, if anybody's been to the St. Pete races, you can't even talk to anybody within two football fields distance, it's so loud. So at this location, the few residents that are there are getting out, they need to get out, and I understand that they'll be moving forward. But storage is great because it's quiet. With the eight-foot fence and additional zoning requirements, it'll be very well buffered. No infrastructure, no water, no sewer in the rural area. That's a great use. We are great, and we're thrilled to meet with the neighbors and work out those issues with them, and they, again, there's been no opposition in that respect. So in that regard, we appreciate your consideration and ask for your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, do you want to make a comment?
I would. I'd like to clarify two items on the record, if I may. One, the existing land use, that is an official layer that is provided by the Hillsborough County Property Appraiser. There is a copy of the existing land use map in your backup, and that is something that we included as part of our presentation. Ms. Yanos was correct in that the surrounding land uses that are existing today are single-family residential as well as agricultural. The light industrial parcels that Mr. Pressman showed do not show up on the property appraiser's data, so I wanted to point that out. And then the other item I wanted to clarify for the record is item 2016. That's the plan amendment for the Motor Enclave. That was approved by the Board in 2020. That did come with an inconsistency recommendation by both staff and the Planning Commission. I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that. My first question I wanted to bring, I hate to bring you back up because your leg. Is there any way I can...
Thank you.
We'll take your time. And thank you for clarifying that because what I saw on the map that you were providing and explaining looks a lot different from what the applicant provided me and when I did my own research. So would you agree that the applicant's map is correct that shows that intensity, the LIs surrounding this subject property?
No, the applicant's map is incorrect. What we have, we provided you in the staff report, we have a full map series in there that totally describes what the area is for. One key item that we have to consider is the community plan. That community plan language is very, very specific, and it's very strong. It literally has a concept map attached to it where it designate this area in particular as Eureka Springs and maintaining the residential 1 future land use category. That's why staff feels very strongly about the inconsistency finding because of that language. It's conflicted. Furthermore, we look at compatibility. So when we did the site visit and we looked at the existing land uses, everything around there has a predominant rural character, you know, use or the vision or the visual that it gives you. So allowing a light industrial planned future land use category, other than the Motor Enclave, because that's a little different situation, and it happened about two years ago. But we feel very strongly for that inconsistency.
Yeah, and I guess we're, my confusion, I don't know, I'm not quite understanding a different situation. There's a racetrack pretty much right next to this property. They're talking about a storage facility that, from what I can tell, has low impact. Again, this is not my district, so I am going to sit back and listen, but to me, I just don't know what else is going to go here. You know, either this is just going to be vacant agricultural land, which maybe the community plan provides. This kind of is what we were talking about our last meeting, where us as a county commission, we look at these individually and we make decisions. And this one, again, I want to sit back and listen to some other commissioners speak, but when I look at the intensity around this area and I see that we have a racetrack and an airport and other light industrial around it, to me, having something that's a low-impact light industrial makes sense. But again, I'm going to sit back and listen to some of the other commissioners' comments. Thanks.
Commissioner Wollstel?
Well, for one, I would love to hear some of the commissioner's opinion that voted yes on the Motor Enclave, if there really was a distinctive difference that has been insinuated. If there was a difference, I'd like to understand that. I guess I'll ignore the differences in the maps. I'm concerned that at one point, we did find an inconsistency in the map and that color scheme a couple months ago, but we're quite confident that the, this is not the same situation, right?
Yes, I'm very confident.
Okay, okay. It does seem, it would seem odd to me for the intensive racetrack to be approved and for this to not be approved. I think that the Planning Commission is, inconsistency is unfair to them because, and I'm glad that it was cleared up because it was said that the Planning Commission agreed to the Motor Enclave, but you did not, and that was cleared up. So you did not, so that slide was wrong. So your findings are just what's in the code, but not necessarily what we might be left with today, and that's unfair to the Planning Commission. So I'll just hear from other commissioners.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I agree with where I think you're going on that, which is that I think the Motor Enclave changed the nature of this area significantly, and I can understand the Planning Commission relying on that language, but the question is, is that applicable anymore? And is it reasonable to, now that the, I mean, you have the Motor Enclave, you have the airport, you have two major expressways meeting, literally a stone's throw from the You know, I think that in terms of the concerns that were raised in the public comment, it seems to me that those are going to, if this moved forward, the question of the buffering and all that and the screening has to be dealt with in a zoning context, not at this point, but clearly it would be important to make sure that, you know, there is a major investment going on just directly to the north of it, and we don't want to, we don't want to do something that'll compromise that. But I tend to agree with where you all are going, which is that it's hard to imagine what's going to go here, given the noise that is going to be surrounding this area.
Commissioner, if you may?
Yeah.
So that's a very good point that you do make. I mean, if you guys feel that this area is transitioning, maybe what Melissa Zornita stated at the Planning Commission Board hearing was that potentially this area needs to maybe be updated, the community plan, right? Because right now, the language does state that this needs to be rural and residential in nature, but maybe this is not the appropriate, you know, avenue per se. Maybe we need to look at updates to the community plan. The other item I wanted to mention was that even though the applicant has a rezoning in the file, it is not dictated as concurrent, and I know Adam can probably speak to that. So right now, we're looking at the comp plan level, and we're looking at it from a future land use standpoint. future land use standpoint. We're not looking at site-specific or use-specific uses on that property. Anything can go in there. So, that's something that we need to take into consideration as well.
All right, thank you. Before we go back around, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate Melissa reminding us of the Planning Commission being consistent in their recommendations of inconsistency. I had forgotten that. But to address, or to try to address, I think Commissioner Wostol's questions, I think the board felt that the combination of the airport and the interstate being right there, that it was an appropriate location for a facility such as this. That's my recollection of a couple of the reasons why the board was so supportive. I'm actually very torn on this because I think it's a good argument about the fact that it appears to be going the light industrial route from the airport, the enclave, the other LI uses around there. However, I do want to point out one correction that Mr. Pressman made. To compare this to St. Pete Grand Prix is an enormous stretch, and I've gone to both. I've been to Motor Enclave in Detroit and been around the track, and it's not a racetrack, it's a test track. And there's one car at a time. So, the amount of noise is no, that's emanating from that location is not even anywhere near the ballpark of St. Pete Grand Prix. So, I felt the need to put that on the record. All that being said, what does concern me, and staff was just going down that direction, is, you know, there's a companion PD going through the system. In recent years, we've encouraged the amendment and the rezoning to travel together. I don't know why this hasn't occurred here, but while I can tell you, I'm definitely leaning toward wanting to support it, I would be much more comfortable if they were traveling together and we're hearing them at the same time. So, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Commissioner Kemp, you're next.
I think there's been a lot of good points made on this. And as I remember too, I remember the discussion, as you characterized it, Commissioner Hagan. But as well, I don't think we, I don't remember any neighborhood opposition. And I saw on this presentation a shortlist. It doesn't look like there's a lot of residents out there, and they would certainly be on notice about this and about the other. I think the motorway is 198 acres, I just saw. So, you know, I think clearly there's not a lot of neighborhood opposition. When I've been out to that area, I'm glad for you to clarify the motorway because I had dinner one night next to the Grand Prix, not knowing. It was, that was, I didn't expect that the motorway would be that way, but if it was, that would be awful for anyone. But I have to say, I-4 and I-75 are awful noisy when I'm over there. And I've been to Eureka Park, I guess it is, and it is extraordinarily loud when you are at the crossroads of I-4 and I-75. All that being said, I also, Commissioner Hagan, I like that idea of traveling together, and we have done that. And I remember, actually, I think one of the first times we did it was when I first got on the board, and it was reassuring in many cases like this about the property. And so, I like that idea of the zoning, traveling together with the restriction, because otherwise we don't have any assurances. Is that true, Mr. Gormley, in terms of the restriction? I mean, anybody, I just, you know, as a matter, I'm not impugning what is being presented here, but they could maybe change their mind in two weeks and come back during the rezoning and have just all kinds of things.
Yes, that's correct. If the plan amendment were approved today, it would not bind them to continue forward with the rezoning that has been filed. That's correct.
So, while I feel comfortable with this use for the reasons that were stated, I also think it would be wise, maybe I could make a motion to that effect, to continue it so we could consider it both with the rezoning as well.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Owen.
I'm fine. Ready to vote.
Okay. Any other board comments? Adam, is that language good enough?
Yes, I do have a, so, the rezoning is currently scheduled for the May 15th ZHM. It is still under review, so that date is the earliest it would go to ZHM. Based on the time of the ZHM recommendation, I believe that the next viable public hearing date would be August, August the 10th at 6:00 p.m., and that would allow the ZHM process to take place and the ZHM recommendation to be rendered and all come back to the board at one hearing.
Okay.
So, I'd recommend a continuation to August the 10th.
Just regarding the process, I don't think August is going to work. Going through the sufficiency process, I hate to say it, but I think we're tracking to September. So, if we don't make August, can we move it to September? I believe with the sufficiency holdups and issues, that's what we're tracking to at the moment.
We don't have a September date, but we have two in October, October 12th and October 26th.
There's no September dates?
No September dates. These are chosen about a year in advance.
We have the budget worked, we have the budget hearings in September in the evenings.
I can't confirm August at the moment. The calendar and the issues are very up in the air, so I'm not sure.
Can that be internally continued if necessary?
If it could be, it could be continued from August if it was continued to that date and not, and it was not ready to be heard, it could be continued again at that August hearing.
All right, well, let's just do that.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, as you correct the record, I would like to as well for 30 seconds.
No, no, we're done, we're done. Sorry, Mr. Pressman.
The Planning Commission report states existing uses.
Mr. Pressman, we're done.
And that's important to me to correct the record.
Okay, thank you, sir. You can do that at the next meeting. All right, please record your vote on the motion.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item we have is item B2. That's HCCPA 23-04. That's a future land use map amendment. I will turn this over to Ms. Gillian Massey, who will be presenting the item. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. HTV, if you could bring up the presentation. Thank you. Again, I'm Gillian Massey with Planning Commission staff, and I'll be presenting on HCCPA 23-04 on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Next slide, please. This is a general location map of the plan amendment, part of the January 2023 cycle. It's located in the urban service area and within the limits of the Sethner-Mango Community Plan. Next slide, please. The site is located in the eastern part of unincorporated county and is outlined here in red. It's on the north side of East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Pine Street and Highview Road. Surrounding uses include single-family residential neighborhoods to the north and vacant commercial land and light commercial uses to the east. There are light commercial uses to the south across East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and single-family residential neighborhoods further south. To the west is a shopping plaza with light commercial uses, including an advanced auto parts, Walmart, and a Publix. Next slide, please. Some background on this amendment is that it's a privately initiated, small-scale map amendment located on approximately 11.56 acres. And the proposal before you is to change the site from residential six to residential 20. Next slide, please. This is the adopted future land use map for the subject site, which is currently designated as residential six. It's mainly surrounded by office, commercial 20 directly to the west, and residential nine further west. Residential four is located immediately north. Residential six is located directly east and to the south across East Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and further east is designated as residential nine. Next slide, please. This is the proposed future land use map for the subject site. The applicant is requesting to change the designation from residential six to residential 20. The residential 20 designation allows for residential uses, urban-scale neighborhood commercial, office, multipurpose, or mixed-use projects. Next slide, please. This slide outlines the potential impacts of changing the designation on the site from residential six to residential 20. The request will result in an increase in potential residential density and commercial intensity. Currently, the maximum potential density is 69 dwelling units, and the maximum commercial intensity is a 0.25 FAR or 125,000 square feet of non-residential development, subject to locational criteria. A change to the residential 20 would allow a potential 231 dwelling units and a commercial intensity of 0.75 FAR or 175,000 square feet, subject to commercial locational criteria, if it were to be developed as one-plan development. It also has the potential to introduce the consideration of urban-scale neighborhood commercial developments. Next slide, please. Planning Commission has reviewed the application and has found it to be inconsistent with several goals, objectives, and policies in the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. The evaluation of the proposed amendment indicated that it would allow for the potential of a multi-story residential building in close proximity to established single-family detached dwellings and single-story light commercial uses. It was found that the application was inconsistent with policies relating to compatibility, neighborhood protection, and the gradual transition of intensities between uses. In addition, there are strategies in the Sethner-Mango Community Plan relating to infill development and compatibility with the existing uses that were found to be inconsistent with the proposed amendment. And all of these policies can be found in your packet. In addition, this proposal was sent out for agency review, and there were no formal objections to the amendment. And all of those comments could be found in your packet as well. Next slide, please. With that, the Planning Commission recommended that HCCPA 23-04 be found inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant here. Good evening, Mr. Brooks. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. If I can just get a minute to get this loaded. All right, I'm going to need help. Okay. But how do I go back? Okay. Good evening, Commissioner. Michael Brooks, for the record, 400 North Tampa Street, Suite 1910. I have with me the applicant, Dr. Greg Henderson, Richard Gonzalez, and Todd Sacco, who are principals of the applicant. You're from the Planning Commission regarding policies regarding compatibility. I want to speak to you about policies that you didn't hear about, and that is policies that encourage high-density residential on major corridors, commercial corridors, transit emphasis corridors, and also infill and mixed use. First slide is the existing, I'm sorry, the existing land use, which I think is a much more telling and accurate picture of what's going on here. This is a major commercial corridor. MLK from Lakewood Drive to Parsons Avenue on the right. All the pinks reflect commercial development on those parcels. Project is, property is immediately adjacent to the Plango Plaza, which is 35 acres, 170,000 square feet of commercial, and it is developed at the maximum allowed under the OC 20. This is the transit emphasis corridor, I want to emphasize, the red star is the subject property. This is the heart Route 38 line, net park to Brandon Mall. It connects employment centers, technical colleges, government institutional uses, parks, medical and office. This is a major. This is a photograph that I put in here because the Planning Commission showed a photograph from the other direction, and it could leave the impression that there's a lot of vacant land out here. I want to point out here that this is the Mango Recreational Center, the star up in the left-hand corners is subject property, the Burnett Sports Complex, both of 25, 20 acres in size, and complement the area in the corridor. The existing zoning you heard about, 125,000 square feet of commercial zoning and mini warehouses currently approved, and that was a topic of conversation at the community outreach. So, you heard about policies, compatibility policies. There are times where compatibility is best determined by the folks who live there. And that was what we heard at the community meetings, which were, both community meetings and the additional outreach, was knocking on door-to-door on the Oak Valley subdivision. And the resounding feedback was that, according to them, the higher-density residential development is more compatible with the existing uses than the currently allowed commercial uses and other intensities. And we didn't have any opposition, either from anybody involved with the community plan or from the surrounding properties at the Planning Commission hearing, and I don't believe we have any here this evening. So, with that, if I could just have one second because I'm technically.
You have one second.
If not here, then where? If these policies can't fit here, then where do they, where do they work?
Thank you, sir.
Michael Yates is going to come up.
Good evening. Good evening. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic. I'm going to figure out how to move this up. But there we go. There we go. Sorry about that. All right, I just want to go through a little bit of the transportation with you real quick. Again, as Mr. Brooks had indicated, the site is within an urban area. It has connectivity on Dr. Martin Luther King to the west. Within one and a half miles to two miles gets you to I-75 to the west. Mango connects up and has an interchange with I-4, all within that same distance. So, it is an urban area with good connectivity. The second part I wanted to go through is the connectivity around the site. As you can see on the slide, is that Highview Road has a signalized intersection with MLK. To the west is Mango Road, which has a signalized intersection. And then to the east is Pine Street, which is also a signalized intersection, provides good connectivity through the neighborhoods and allows for easy circulation. And then, whoop, sorry about that. And then, we also did a roadway link evaluation. I know in the, one of those staff reports I saw, there was a question about what the capacity of the road was, and I'll get into that. But we did a link evaluation to determine what the worst-case traffic situation was. We looked at the residential, and we also looked at the commercial. So, from the change in trips, the residential was the worst case, which was the total trips for going to a rez 20 is 1556. So, that is the worst case from the trip generation standpoint because the commercial pretty much washes out. But the net impacts of the commercial, just adding it to the roadway network, was at 4599, which we did add to the existing volumes and shows that there is existing capacity out there on the roadway. And I just want to explain a little bit the discrepancy and where that confusion comes from. The current LOS tables has MLK as a two-lane undivided facility. It was widened back in 2013 or so to a four-lane facility all the way east to Kingsway. So, it's already a four-lane facility out there. So, when you look at the four-lane capacity of 398, that shows we, there is available capacity, adding in the full commercial entitlements, not just the residential entitlements. So, that's all I have. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the applicant team going to speak? Okay. Commissioner Cohen.
You know, I have great respect for the work that the Planning Commission does and the staff does. But in this case, I really find myself disagreeing with them, and I think that this checks all the boxes for what we say that we're looking for. We have development inside the urban service area on a major transit emphasis corridor, literally right next to a grocery store and other shopping amenities. And we're not in the coastal high-hazard area. You know, we have a housing shortage, an acute one, in this county, and I do find myself persuaded by the applicant's question. If it's not here, where is it going to go?
Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and I took a deep dive into this as well, and I agree a lot. Yeah, and I took a deep dive into this as well, and I agree a lot of what my colleague just said. I've taken a lot of issue with a lot of the rez 20s, especially as you get out towards that urban service area line. Because of the lack of public transportation, walkability, commercial property, this one, I think the tough issue with is there's just not a lot of rez 20s around it, or high-density around it. But I think this particular project, it makes sense to me. It makes sense. So I'm inclined to support it. It's not my district, so I will sit back and listen. But, but to me, this is infill property. It's, it's surrounded by commercial, and I think that, I just think this project makes sense. But again, I'm going to sit back and listen to the commissioners.
Commissioner Kemp?
Well, I'll start out by moving approval. But I also think this checks off all the boxes. I especially like the mixed use, because I think the mixed use is something that, you know, we can put residents, every resident, most every resident will bring a car, maybe two. But if you have mixed use, you have some opportunity to, you know, have people to get some services in those areas where there's mixed use and there's commercial around there. And, you know, I do think it checks off all the boxes, unlike, I'll just have to, because before, it was very far out there on the edge of the urban service area, and I didn't really think it checked off the boxes for the densities. But I do think that this is appropriately placed and what kind of development that, you know, I want to have here, and I think is, is appropriate. And we, we do have a housing crisis. More importantly, too, as I always say, we have a housing, we have a, we need to have more opportunities for affordable housing, which I've, I could imagine this would suit that as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Tepeda?
Yes, because of the major roads that are close by, and also he mentioned that he had a lot of positive community feedback as well, so I'm in support of it.
Commissioner Wollstel?
We all know how I feel about rez 20s, but specifically, I'm waiting for your opinion since it's in your district.
I wholeheartedly support this for myriad of reasons, most of which have been, have been identified already this evening in the, in the urban service area, the proximity of the interstates, on the transit corridor, no opposition. The neighbors literally asking, they'd rather have multifamily than a shopping center, so, and it's consistent with all the, you know, policies that were identified. So I'm happy to support it. So we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. So no other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, now, can we have a motion to approve the ordinance on the adoption of CPA 2304 for adoption?
So moved for second.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
All right, thank you. We're adjourned.